All right, welcome everyone to the October 7th, 2019 City Council Regular Meeting. If you would all join me with pledging allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. City Administrator, please note that all of the council is present. The first item on our agenda this evening is to approve the agenda. We do have one item that was not printed this last weekend. That would be item number four, which is the approval of the minutes for the October 2nd Municipal Consent Public Information Meeting. Chair would entertain a motion on the minutes, or on the agenda?
So moved.
All right, we have a motion to approve the agenda with the additions. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes. Motion carries. So we'll move on to the approval of the minutes. Our first set of minutes is from the September 16th regular City Council meeting.
Move to accept.
We have a motion to accept by Counselor Kraus.
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Deech. Discussion on the minutes.
I think I seconded that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Correction.
For minutes' sake.
Yes. Counselor Bowler.
It's okay.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes. Four zero. Next, we have the minutes from Monday, the 20th, Monday, September 23rd, a special City Council meeting. We have a motion to accept.
Motion.
We have a motion by Counselor Deech.
I'll second.
We have a second by Counselor Kraus. Hearing no discussion, question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes. Motion carries. Next, we have the minutes for a special City Council meeting on September 30th. Chair would entertain a motion to accept those minutes?
So moved.
Motion by Counselor Bowler. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Deech. Any discussion on those minutes? Hearing no discussion, question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes. That is four zero, motion carries. And final, we have the minutes from the Municipal Consent Public Information Meeting on October 2nd.
So moved.
We have a motion from Counselor Kraus to accept the minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Counselor Bowler. Motion and a second for the minutes of the public information meeting. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, question?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote yes. Four zero, most, the minutes are accepted. Moving on to the payments of claims. We have a transfer from the lodging tax fund of $706.38. We also have accounts payable, our claims, the City of International Falls Regular Claims, Airport Commission Claims, $67,886.95. Phase Two Claims for the airport, we have $42,853.42. Phase One of the Runway Reconstruction Project, $75,002.24. And Library Board Claims of $3,392. For a total accounts payable of $449,719.56. Please.
Mr. Mayor, the Library Board Claims are zero. It's Runway Reconstruction Project Phase Three Claims, $3,392.
I apologize. It is Project Reconstruction Phase Three for $3,392. Keeping the total amount of accounts payable. Motion, or Chair would accept a motion to accept the resolution?
Motion.
We have a motion from Counselor Deech.
I'll second.
We have a second by Counselor Kraus. Any discussion on the payment of claims? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes. Payments of claims, resolution has passed. Next, we open up for audience. Anybody in the audience want to address the council at this time? For any items that are not on the agenda. Hearing none, you do have an opportunity later in the meeting if you'd like to bring something up later. Next, we have the public hearing. It is the first reading of the ordinance for the Court Code of Ordinances to amend the zoning map. This came after our zoning meeting we had last week. City Administrator, would you like to give a little background information on this?
Certainly, Mayor. Thank you. Council, as you pointed out, Mayor, there was a Planning Commission meeting last week on Tuesday, I believe it was. And at the meeting, the, there was two applications that the Planning Commission considered. The first was a request to plat property where the first addition to the International Falls Industrial Park is located. It's in the vicinity of 22nd Street, just east of 53rd, or Highway 53. And so there was a public hearing held there and a good conversation. And again, the draft minutes from that were included in your packet. But there was a proposal to rezon property as well as do a preliminary plat. Because there's an amendment to the official zoning map and Chapter 11 of the City Code, this is being put forth as an ordinance amendment. And so we've included in the packet a recommendation from the Planning Commission to move forward with the rezoning application. And you can see in the attached map to the packet materials that you have that there's two lots that are currently zoned P1 Public, which will be rezoned to Manufacturing 1B. And that would be Lot 1 and Lot 2 in Block 1. Essentially, the southern two most lots in the proposed plat. On the easternmost two lots, Lots 3 and 4 of the same Block 1, the current zoning is P1. The request was to go to a commercial 2B zoning, I believe. And after discussion at the Planning Commission level, the Planning Commission is advising that the zoning classification for Lots 3 and 4 be changed from what was applied to be commercial 2B to be commercial 1A. The primary difference being that there is different uses that are allowed in the commercial 1A district, or more restrictive uses in the C1A district than are allowed in the C2B district. And so they, the Commission thought it was more appropriate to have the C1A uses allowed on this particular, these two lots that front on Second Avenue East. And so the recommendation was to amend the applicant, which was the Kuching Economic Development Authority's request from C1A to, or I'm sorry, C2B to C1A. I think from my standpoint, I have some concerns with that because the C1A district allows zero lot line setbacks. So to accommodate that, the Planning Commission also recommended that there be easements, utility easements on all property lines there that are the same as what would be required in the manufacturing zoning district. So in essence, you can't build right on the lot line, which you can on a C1A, you can only build up to the easement. So the Planning Commission had forwarded that recommendation for this first reading. As far as process is concerned, the Planning Commission makes recommendations. It's up to the City Council to make a final decision. And you would do that at the time that you have a second reading and, and final reading on another public hearing. So that could be scheduled as early as the 21st, or it could be delayed for a future meeting. I did craft the ordinance, which was different than the conversation at the Planning Commission, to have a Section 2, you'll see that the amendment to the City, the City Official Zoning District wouldn't take effect until after the filing of the final plat. And that would be made of record and filed at the County Recorder's Office. And the reason for that is, is there could be revisions between the time that this preliminary plat's approved and the time that, that the final plat is actually submitted for approval. So I visited with the city attorney about this, and he thought it was prudent to also have that provision in there, that until the final plat is submitted, that the rezoning won't go into effect. So it actually reflects the actual lot conditions and dimensions that are approved by the council.
Okay. And am I correct that this is a public hearing, so it would make, it would make good sense to open this up to the floor if there's anyone with a vested interest in the properties that would come and speak on for or against this? Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak during the public hearing for the change of the properties from P1 Public Use to M1B Manufacturing and C1A Commercial? Anyone that would like to come and speak on, on that behalf? Hearing none, the Chair would entertain a motion, or be at the council's will of how you would like to handle this particular item. What is your recommendation at this time? Because I went through, I sat through the meeting. I, I know where we're at on this, and I just am curious on...
I think the council, Mr. Mayor, I think the council has two options. You can move forward, approve the first reading, and schedule the second reading at the next regular meeting, and, and move forward that way. And, and again, this particular ordinance would dictate that the actual zoning would not take effect until such time as you approve the final plat. And the applicant would have as long as, it's either one or two years before they actually file that. So it could be some period of time, it could be relatively soon. The other option would be is to not take action on the first reading, and table the first reading for a future meeting. I raised that as an option, only that the city is in the process, as the council knows, of, of considering the comprehensive plan with a consulting firm. And then we're also looking at updating the subdivision ordinance and the zoning ordinance. And in the new zoning ordinance, these, this particular zoning classification will not be in place anymore. So as part of the new, adoption of the new zoning ordinance, we're going to change this to some other kind of commercial form of zoning that will have setbacks. I don't feel strongly one way or the other, because I know that this property is owned by KITA. KITA is very cognizant and concerned with the impacts of any use on these lots, and what the impacts might be on adjacent jurisdictions. And they can put any conditions that they want as, as a condition of the sale of those properties. So uncomfortable with either approach that the council might want to take.
All right, well Chair, the Chair would entertain a motion on the first reading of the ordinance.
I move to accept the ordinance as written.
Okay. Counselor Kraus has a motion to accept the ordinance. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Counselor Bowler. Discussion, please.
I guess my concern would be what kind of commercial activity is going to go there? And then how would it affect the neighbors on either side?
Well, anything that's allowed in the downtown, excuse me, the downtown commercial district would be allowed in this district. And in the conversation that the Planning Commission had, they thought that the permitted uses were a little bit more restrictive here than what would be in the C2B. And, and what comes to mind in the conversation was that some people had a concern that in a C2B, you could actually put in a drive-in movie theater. Now, I don't think the site is big enough for something like that, but they didn't think that was an appropriate location for that, so that's why they didn't feel that was an appropriate zoning classification. Again, I think KITA can have some control over the proposed sale of the property, and will take into consideration the proposed use. So that was one example that was mentioned, and so that was, that was the discussion.
Okay. I guess my only concern would be, as I say, the neighbors on both sides, and then depending on what the use is going to be, is the amount of traffic it may produce on Second Avenue East.
Mayor, I think in response to that, one of the comments I would make is that, is that you can see from the plat that 22nd Street is proposed to terminate at a cul-de-sac within the industrial park and not continue on the Second Avenue East. So that will limit any traffic really from any lots within the manufacturing zoning classification, and just the two lots, Lots 3 and 4, that front on Second Avenue would have access to Second Avenue East. And again, the commercial classification is a less intense use than what you might expect from a manufacturing classification. So there's not going to be a lot of semi-traffic and deliveries and, and all-night kinds of uses typically in that kind of a zoning classification.
Okay. Well, and a follow-up to that, too, there's a hundred-foot buffer that's going to be behind that, be on Second Avenue East as, or, yeah, Second Avenue East as well off of that 22nd Street. So it should, the expectation, as I understood it coming out of that public hearing, or, I'm sorry, that planning and zoning meeting, is that that would more likely to not stay a wooded area, so there would still be a physical boundary between anything that's in this commercial zone and what's on Second Avenue East. Okay. The only other question I had, and I, just as a follow-up, is that water line that was going to be going into the M1B area, did we get that taken care of, or?
Yes, Mayor, there was a conversation about a number of modifications to the application. And KITA has reached out to their surveyor about making the amendments that the Planning Commission directed, and those were included in the, in the preliminary plat application that is later on this same agenda. So the surveyor was reaching out to our Public Works Department to get a firm location on where the sanitary sewer, which is shown on here, but also the water mains were located within the 22nd Street right-of-way, and running north and south on the alley on the far west part of the subdivision. So I think it's their intention to update the preliminary plat document and show all the utilities that are in place now.
Okay. Any other discussion on, on the changes? Hearing none, we have a motion by Counselor Kraus and a second from Counselor Bowler to have the first reading of the ordinance. No other discussion, question?
Aye. Aye.
I'll vote yes. Motion carries. First reading of the ordinance has passed. Next, we move on to the consent agenda. Remember to the council that any item can be pulled out of the consent agenda and be put on the regular agenda if you'd like to have discussion. First item we have is to approve necessary expense for the Street Water Commissioner to attend the annual Road Salt Symposium on October 24th down in the cities. Next, we have to approve the 2020 licenses, license renewals. A resolution on approving the application for exempt permit for the Friends of the Falls Fire for the annual venison feed on Monday, November 25th. We have a resolution approving the application for an exempt permit for the Borderland Alano Club to sell raffle tickets to be held on December 15th. To approve the 2020 Northeast Service Cooperative BCBS Health Insurance Renewal and authorize the signatures. And to approve the 2020 Group BCBS Medicare Senior Gold Health Insurance Renewal and authorize the signatures. That's everything that we have on the consent agenda. Chair would entertain a motion?
Motion.
We have a motion from Counselor Deech to accept the consent agenda. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Counselor Kraus. There's no discussion on the consent agenda. All, question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes. Consent agenda passes. Our next item is the mayoral proclamation recognizing Marguerite Koschik's 100th birthday on October 11th, 2019. Chair would entertain a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion from Counselor Kraus and a second from Counselor Bowler. Any discussion? No discussion.
Congratulations.
All those in favor, or, question, I'm sorry, question?
Aye. Aye.
And I'll vote yes. And with that being said, we have Marguerite Koschik here, and I would love to present her with the proclamation at this time. She'll stand.
Yeah, there's just a little step there, you're going to be just fine. Oh, it's okay. Come on up. Right here, sir. Okay, just right here, this is the mayoral proclamation. Yeah, it goes right here. Do you want to look down the camera right over there? It's okay. You're doing fantastic.
I'm doing a selfie. Don't want to do that. That's a wonderful pose.
Thank you.
Would you like to sing?
I'm not very, this is my third language, you know, English. So I'm not very good in speaking, but thank you so much, I really appreciate that. And I never expected this ever. Coming to America was my first big push, and I think I'm hardly second world, but I left here in this place.
Well, I appreciate everything you give for both our community and the FSW. Thank you. Thank you. You can have a lot more than that.
Thank you.
I wish I could speak English better than I could hold a speech for you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Excellent.
All right, our next item on our agenda this evening is another mayoral proclamation declaring October National Chiropractic Health Month. Chair would entertain a motion?
Motion.
Counselor Deech, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second from Counselor Bowler. Any discussion? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes. All right. Next, we will go to the mayoral proclamation declaring October Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And Chair would entertain a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion by Counselor Kraus.
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Deech. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, question?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote yes. Motion carries. Next, we have a resolution to approve certification for delinquent water and sewer accounts to the county auditor treasurer. Basically, what this is, is the, any of our water and sewer that hasn't been paid by a specific date gets put onto the taxes. So the Chair would entertain a motion to approve the delinquent water and sewer accounts.
So moved.
We have a motion by Counselor Bowler. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Kraus. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion, question?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote yes. Motion carries. Resolution passes. Next, we have a very similar resolution. This time, it is for the delinquent grass and blight invoices from the previous summer. Again, this will be assessed onto the taxes of the property owners. Chair would entertain a motion?
Motion.
We have a motion from Counselor Deech. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Counselor Kraus. Motion and second, we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes. Motion carries. Resolution adopted. Next, we have a resolution approving the municipal, excuse me, the municipal consent and layout for the Highway 53 Reconstruction Project with the Department of Transportation, District 1. Background information for those that are in the audience, we have been working on this for better part of a year and a half, two years. As you can see, the, the original outline of how we're going to be working on 53 is sitting behind us. We just had a municipal consent hearing last week, and we heard some input from some business owners in our community on their concerns for the project. At this time, we are at the point to finalize the project. Chair would entertain a motion to accept the resolution?
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion to accept the resolution. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Counselor Deech and Counselor Bowler. At this time, I would like to open up for discussion. Anyone in the audience like to bring something up on the Highway 53 project? Anyone on the council like to speak on this?
I think our main, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
I think our main, the main talk has been the stoplight at 7th. And going through the report here that they just gave us, I asked for what time, what time did the traffic studies, which is, it was, it was fine, it was prime time. Why we didn't meet the criteria, and it's got the table here why we didn't. Another issue that was brought up was the site distance at Northern Lumber. And our engineer's recommendation here was that we could close, narrow that down to two lanes instead of three, so you'd have site distance there with a stop sign. And also, there's, what his recommendation also said was that we should either put two stop signs there or a mini roundabout. What that would mean, I don't know. I know everybody likes roundabouts. That's what I was going to say, it's the same type of roundabouts we have over there by Worldies in the winter time. But to me, I don't think a stoplight's in the works right now, I don't think we can do it. They won't let us do it.
And again, additional background, the, the cost, if the city were to pay for it, would be $255,000. However, even if we were to pay for it, the Department of Transportation wouldn't put it in, so I guess we would just own a stop, stoplight.
And that's an estimate?
And that's an estimate.
And no guarantee?
Yes.
That's a lifetime maintenance on it, too, because they will do no maintenance.
Correct.
So we'd have to find somebody that would be able to, with the new electronic stoplights, it's going to be different.
Well, and one of the conversations that I had with, with some people in the community this weekend, too, is in the event that we don't get the stoplight put in, and we find out that it is a safety hazard, it is, it is something that needs to get put in in the future, as of right now, we're paying for it anyways. So if we have to put it in later, it becomes a safety issue. We will put it in later and we'll have to, to work it out. But I, I think that we had really good dialogue back and forth with, with the state on this project. And these are the experts. These are the ones that did the counts, they're the ones who, who have done this in other cities. And not saying that they didn't make, they don't make mistakes, because everyone does. But I think that the recommendation is to not put in the stoplight at 7th Street. The original recommendation was to not put in a stoplight at 11th Street. We did, we did fight back a little bit on both 7th and 11th, and we were given 11th Street. So I, I feel confident in the engineer work that has been done, and I am ready to move forward. ready to move forward on this project. Any other discussion on the Highway 53 resolution? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes, motion carries. We will, the resolution passes as written. All right, our next item is to approve the preliminary plat of the first addition to International Falls Business Park, generally located east of 53 at 22nd Street. Whole bunch of letters, for KETA. Could you give us the background information on this one?
Certainly, Mayor, excuse me, the, as we discussed earlier, the Planning Commission held a public hearing on the resolution to approve a preliminary plat, and the name of the plat is the First Addition to International Falls Business Park, and again, it's located around the existing International Falls Business Park plat. The applicant was the Kuching Economic Development Authority, and they obtained the property from the county through the tax forfeiture process, and they're, they've prepared this preliminary plat to subdivide the property into the lots that you see in the attachment. I want to make clear to the council that the applicant is represented by Paul Nevinan, he's here today. Kelly Myers serves as the zoning administrator, and he's also here tonight, so if anybody on the council has any questions of either of them, they're here and available to answer questions. The Planning Commission held a public hearing, and I prepared this draft resolution for council action that I believe includes the findings of fact that was prepared by the Planning Commission, and then the decision they made, and I might just identify three conditions to the approval, or amendments to the preliminary plat that they had suggested. The first would be that a, there'd be a utility and drainage easement consistent with the setback requirements for the manufactured 1B district on lots 3 and 4, Block 1, and again, that's the location that we had talked about previously for lots 3 and 4, fronting on Second Avenue. Outlots B and C of the preliminary plat must be left in a natural state, and outlots B and C were created, as I understand the initiative, they're about, each about 50 feet wide, and they extend the full length of the north border of the, or north boundary of the plat, and they're intended to be a buffer strip between 21st Street and the properties to the north of this plat, and where the lots potentially could be developed within this preliminary plat. So there's a buffer strip included. And then number three was that all utilities within the platted area will have drainage and utility easements identified on the preliminary plat and plan, and the example for that would be is where the sanitary sewer utility is shown on Lot 1, Block 1, in the southwest corner of that, and the preliminary plan right now shows that on Lot 1, our public works staff seems to think it's in the alley, so that information is being verified by the applicant's surveyor, and will be reflected, if necessary, with an easement on it, which goes to what your question was earlier regarding the water main, so. I think that's all I would like to say regarding this particular application, but again, I would point out that we have a couple other people here that might want to share comments or information with the council.
Mr. Nevinan, Mr. Myers, either of you want to come up and speak on this? You're welcome to, you don't have to. Okay. All right, well, Chair would entertain a motion to approve the preliminary plat as the city administrator just outlined.
So moved.
We have a motion by Counselor Buller. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Counselor Deech. We have a motion and a second to approve the preliminary plat. Any discussion? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes, resolution passes. Next on the agenda, we have to approve the hiring of Dan Sweeney as a firefighter engineer as per the International Falls Fire Department's civil service testing process. Chief Manassas, do you want to come up and speak on that?
Thank you, Mayor. As previously mentioned, we did have a vacancy in the position of fire apparatus driver/operator. We did conduct a entrance exam through the International Falls Firefighters Civil Service Commission helped with that exam, and that was to establish a roster to select a replacement for firefighter engineers. From the roster I provided, we, I respectfully request the city council to approve the placement of the top applicant to replace Jacob Harris, and that was Dan Sweeney as the top applicant, requesting the changes to be effective October 8, 2019. And just for background, once this roster is established, this is good for two years following the date of the test, so we do have a service roster for the next two years should a opening come up again.
Okay. All right, with that being said, Chair would entertain a motion to approve the hiring of Dan Sweeney as a firefighter engineer.
So moved.
We have a motion from Counselor Kraus.
Second.
We have a second from Counselor Buller. Any discussion? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes. The hiring of Dan Sweeney as a firefighter engineer is approved. Next, I assume we have to do some training for our new firefighter engineer.
That's correct.
So would you like to give a little background on the training that Mr. Sweeney would be going to?
Absolutely, so in the near future, nice coincidence for us, there is a pump operator training in Brainerd, we have a couple other firefighters, including myself, attending different trainings at the same facility on the same date, so we will have a group going down at that time. Be beneficial to send Dan down to that training as well, for pump operator class, and get a certification to be pump operator.
Okay, so we would need a motion to approve the expenses for Dan Sweeney to attend the basic pumps and emergency driving classes.
Motion.
We have a motion from Counselor Deech.
I'll second.
We have a second from Counselor Kraus. Motion and a second, any discussions on approving the expenses?
Question?
Yes.
You said it was in Brainerd?
Correct, it's at Camp Ripley.
Oh, I thought it's Little Falls here.
Yeah, kind of in between there.
Okay, yeah, I was just looking too, it's okay.
Part of the training and lodging is set up through Camp Ripley, so the lodging is provided through them.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote yes, expenses are allowed for Mr. Sweeney. Moving on, thank you, Chief. Moving on, approve and declare, approve declaring the vacancy of maintenance worker one, and authorize placement of the most recent applicant pool. Commissioner Brokaw.
Mayor, City Council, as we discussed on our 23rd, or September 23 meeting, with Dan being one of our maintenance worker ones, we did interview four applicants, Gary and I feel that the, you approved the first two hires, we're comfortable with the third, to fill Dan's position. So we request, he started 80%, his name is Brian Kelly. So it's sad to see Dan go, but it worked out well that we had a pool to draw from, so we didn't have to repost, so.
So let me get this correct, it would be Brian Kelly at 80% for the maintenance worker one position?
Yes.
Okay. Chair would entertain a motion to hire Mr. Kelly at 80% for the maintenance worker one position?
So moved.
We have a motion from Counselor Kraus. Do we have a second?
Second.
Counselor Deech, discussion? Hearing no discussion, question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes, motion carries. Thank you, Commissioner Brokaw. Next, we have the, approve the hiring of Marilyn Hanen, EMTB to the International Falls ambulance roster. Chief, if I would have realized, I would have just moved down the agenda slightly.
Okay. Didn't have an agenda in front of me, so I didn't know if I was next or not.
Thank you, Mayor. I am requesting to add EMT Marilyn Hanen to our active ambulance roster. Marilyn was recommended to me, I'm sorry, her name is Mary Lynn, I was corrected on that the other day, so I want to get this right, her name is Mary Lynn. She has over eight years' experience as an EMT, and comes recommended by a current employee of International Falls, so her current living, working situation places her outside of her response area for 911 calls, however, she'd be able to pick up shifts and sign up in advance for scheduled shifts. I did meet with Mary Lynn on Monday, the 30th of September, and after speaking with her face to face, I feel confident she'd do well for us. Further, I do feel her prior experience would be beneficial to our service. So the background on this, outside of what I have written down, is she did come requested from a current paramedic on our service, so I take that as a very good recommendation. With our current staffing, the way we're doing it, with our scheduled shifts, like I said, she is not available for 911 calls, but she is available to pick up two, I think she said one to two shifts a week for us, so again, just a good addition to our service.
Okay, so the Chair would entertain a motion to hire Mary Lynn Hanen, EMTB to the ambulance roster.
So moved.
We have a motion by Counselor Buller. Second?
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Kraus. We have a motion and a second, discussion?
Mayor?
Yes.
Excuse me, I do want to point out for the record that we have an ordinance that was adopted in December of 2016, requiring our employees to live within an eight-minute response area, and I know that we've had some conversations, either as part of that adoption, or sometime not too long afterwards, about in situations that the chief is outlining, where we have scheduled shifts, and we don't have to depend on the person for 911 responses, the response area, or living within that response area and time of eight minutes isn't as important, so I just wanted to point out that her residence really isn't within the eight-minute response area, but the chief is indicating that she will only be filling scheduled shifts, and she will not be available for being on call to take 911 responses if they come in, so just want to make sure that the council is aware of that and comfortable with that situation.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Chief, in essence, she would be, it's a casual hire, correct? I mean...
I don't really know how to answer that.
As you pointed out, she wouldn't be expected to field 911, so it would be scheduled shift, so she would already be at the fire hall.
Correct.
For the scheduled shift, so I don't have a problem with her living outside the service area, as she's coming here for the scheduled shift.
All right, any other discussion? Chair would call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
And I will vote yes, motion carries 4-0. All right, next we have Linda Barnett, EMTB to the ambulance roster.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, I am requesting to add EMTB Linda Barnett to our active service roster. She submitted an application actually some time ago, she was a lone applicant, and I did talk to her in the past that I would be willing to put her on when I put other people on, so this is her opportunity, and I did contact her, she is excited about being, having the opportunity to serve us. Linda completed the last EMT class we put on through International Falls, she does not have any current active experience as an EMTB, so a little bit different training scenario, an FTO set up for her to get her up and rolling, but she is a local person that would fit our criteria for, unlike Mary Lynn, she would be available to do 911s and whatnot, so I, again, speaking with her, I think she'd be a good addition to our service.
Okay, so the Chair would entertain a motion to hire Linda Barnett as an EMTB.
So moved.
Counselor Kraus makes the motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Counselor Buller. Discussion? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes, looks like you got yourself two EMTs.
Thank you.
All right, next we will go to the mayor's appointment of Ashley Koschik to the Library Board of Trustees to a three-year term expiring December 31, 2019, to, due to Lindsay Barnhart's resignation and moving out of the area. Chair would entertain a motion.
Motion.
We have a motion from Counselor Deech.
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Buller. Any discussion? I don't know, it seems like a pretty rough one. All right, we have no discussion, Chair would entertain a question, or the question.
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes, 4-0. All right. Next is to approve the mayor's appointments to the 2020 Census Complete Count Committee. I contacted all of the members here, this is one, the city administrator, and I looked into believing that Mayor Anderson may have had some people set up for the committee, but as we went through, it looks like he was ready, the committee was set, or the guidelines were set, but we hadn't actually contacted any names, or to the best of our knowledge, no names had been contacted. So based off the criteria that they were looking for, which was businesses, media, social services, minorities, I put together this list, and I've contacted all of them directly, so it would be my will to have Tara Besch from the Health and Social Services, Arianna Daniel from Social Services, Dwayne Etney from the Media, Laurel Beeger, or a representative from the Journal for Media, Tricia Hybol for our business community, Brad Crasaway for Education, Leith Larson, part of our business community, Alyssa Hackenmuller, a workforce specialist, and Amy Mortensen for Social Services. Chair would ask for concurrence for the, for the appointments.
So moved.
We have a motion from Counselor Buller. Second?
I'll second.
We have a second from Counselor Kraus. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, and I will vote yes, and motion carries. The appointments for the census is complete. Next is to advertise for candidates to serve on internal and external committees. We have vast, we have a large amount of committees that need to be filled, one of them is the Cable Commission, we have five vacancies on that, we have the Charter Commission, there are, I counted eight openings on the Charter Commission, but there was slight confusion on my part, because we had some of them that it appeared had expired in 2018, and we hadn't updated any of those, which kind of shocks me, but that's, that's what the findings were. Fire Civil Service, Craig Bernath, his term ends this year, Craig Bernath is welcome to also be appointed or put his name in, but I'm going to try to get as many people to apply for these positions as possible, and there's a very good, good chance that some of the people that have been in the seats get in the seats again. The Housing and Redevelopment Authority, the HRA, Art Holt's term expires on December 31, 2019. The Planning Commission, we have a handful of positions that are up, including Jerry France, in which just put in a letter of resignation at the Planning Commission this last week. Police Civil Service, we have an opening on that on December 23. Police Civil Service, we have an opening on that on December 23rd, I'm sorry, December 31st of this year, and again, Jerry Franzen had put in his letter of resignation for the Board of Appeals. So, I would, I would ask to have those vacancies be open, that's not what I want to do. I want to advertise for candidates to serve on those committees. If I, if we could get a motion to advertise?
Motion.
We have a motion to advertise from Counselor Deech. Second?
I'll second.
Counselor Kraus. We have a motion and second to advertise for candidates to serve on internal and external committees. Any discussion?
Mayor?
Please.
Mayor, just a question, just for Council's information, in your pack-up materials, we include on the second page, or the back of the first page, is a proposed advertisement, so I wanted to make sure that the Council was comfortable with that timeframe, we're asking for applications to be due to the city no later than noon on Friday, November 8th. It could be moved up a week if you thought it was important to move faster. And then, I also wanted the Council to be aware that we have a draft application for appointment as a member of any one of those commissions, and so the Council isn't comfortable with the kinds of questions we're asking. If there's something else you'd like to see inserted or included in here, we can, we can do that as well.
I guess I had, I had one question. I was, obviously, I was reading on the other board and commission vacancies, but the proposed advertisement, my confusion when I was reading it, and maybe this is just historical precedent, and it's not the way it's, it is actually written, but the Airport Commission Board historically has been city councilors that have sat on that, is that not a city councillor-appointed position? I, that's my question, because why would we advertise if it's going to be someone that's on this board? And I know that that is, at least it is my belief, that that is also the case for the Kuching Economic Development Authority and the Recreation Commission. As I understand it, historically, those three specific boards would be served by a city councillor, so I don't know if it would make sense to advertise those specific positions.
Mayor, my response to that would be, is that the Airport Commission has, is composed of two members from the County Board, two members from the City Council, and then there's one at-large appointee. I believe, I'm not 100% certain, that the City Council makes that appointment, and right now Paul Nevenin sits in that position, and he has for a number of years, so I'm not sure if his vacancy is open or not. What we chose to do is list all the commissions and committees we have here, and then, you know, people might be, they might apply, for instance, for the Planning Commission vacancy, but, you know, after the Council considers all these, perhaps you would consider having them fill one of the other committee or commission appointments. Regarding the Recreation Commission, I know that that has, I believe, three city council members, and two school board members, and then there's four at-large members, and I think, I think the Recreation Commission itself makes appointments to those. But again, I thought if we had an applicant pool, those names could be referred to the Recreation Commissioner if and when those vacancies come up, which will, I believe, are effective February 1st.
That is accurate.
So, and your other one was... There's two over here. What was the other committee or commission?
The other one that I had mentioned was the KETA.
And I know that there's at-large members on there, I'm not, I'm not aware of how that appointment process works for KETA.
Okay. And that's the only reason I had asked that question, it just was a historic question. Yep. Well, no, North Kooch, we, North Kooch Sanitary District, we appoint, we appoint to that one. Okay, well, that was, that was my question. All right, we have a motion and a second, Counselor Deech, Counselor Kraus, to advertise. I assume we're okay with the way it's written?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
I would like to point out, with the Recreation Commission, that the current vacancy is for a member of the City Council. So, and also, they do, the Recreation Commission does their own advertising for open spots, so they would take an ad and have their own, have their own policies and procedures for filling the four at-large positions. I'm not, I'm not against including it in this, but there, there would be an additional application process that they would go through that's set by the Rec Commission, so...
It might be well advised then to just delete it, that's why I asked the question.
That would be, that would, my recommendation would be to, since they, since the Rec Commission does their own application search, it would make sense to do that.
Counselor Deech, are you okay with removing the Recreation Commission off of the proposed advertisement?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Then, and that's amended motion, you're okay with the second?
Yes.
Okay. So now, the way we have it with the amended motion is, we will do the proposed advertisement as written, with striking the Recreation Commission. Any other discussion? Hearing no discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes. Advertisement shall go out. Next, we have the resignation of Jerry Franzen from the Planning Commission and the Sony Board of Appeals, and authorizing advertising to fill applicants, which we kind of just did. So, if we could just accept the letter of resignation from Mr. Franzen for those two committees? We have a motion to accept the letter of resignation from Mr. Franzen with regret. Do we have a second?
Second with regret.
We have a second, so Counselor Bowler, Counselor Kraus. Discussion? Hearing no discussion? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes. The resignation has been accepted. Next, we will go to the, we don't have any other business in front of us, so we will go to the reports of the Administrator, Attorney, and Department Heads. City Administrator?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple items briefly. The comprehensive plan, which we've been looking at, and we have a proof to view and comment on, the consultant was hoping to get comments from us today, so if anybody has that in process, I would encourage you to try and get on the website where he's asking for comments, and try and do that today, so he can move forward with making those revisions. Secondly, just a reminder that on Thursday at 5:00 PM, a committee of the whole meeting was set to consider our road projects in the future, the local streets that we're going to do, as well as other infrastructure improvements, so I just wanted to remind the Council of that meeting, again, at 5:00 on Thursday, as a committee of the whole. And then, the City Council authorized advertising for applicants to serve as councillor-at-large, and we set a deadline of noon on October 11th this Friday. So, my question for you just would be, that we had also set Monday, October 14th, for the date where you were going to interview applicants. So, I'm, I'm asking for firming up a time on the 14th for you to meet and consider applications, and I think I could offer in my, I think the reason why we left the time to be determined was, we don't know how many applications we're going to get, but in my brief informal conversation with the Mayor, we thought that perhaps 20 minutes would be adequate time for each candidate. But if we got as many as 10 or 12, that could be almost four hours of interviews, to give everybody 20 minutes and to make the transition, so I'm just interested in getting, having the Council set a time on Monday, the 14th. And then, again, as a reminder, on the 15th, you've already set a special meeting, which is Tuesday, the 15th, at 5:00, to consider making the appointment to the councillor-at-large position.
Council? It would be, it would be my, I would be interested in doing it earlier in the day, like at 1:00, because as I understand it, I believe we have six applicants right now, and if we do 20 minutes and we get another five applicants, I mean, we could be here for all night long, and I, I believe it's important to do the process and speak to everybody that is interested in the position. But I know it's also going to be a time restraint on, on people, but if we could start early, at maybe 1:00, and, and go through, I do know that we'll have to have one, one interview via phone, they will be out of town, so they already had plans in the works, so we will, I would like to start at 1:00. I don't know what your timeframes are on, on Monday. Counselor Bowler?
I gotta work till 3:30.
Hey, 3:30 is starting? 1:00? Okay. Counselor Kraus?
I can make it work.
Okay.
I'm open whatever time.
Okay, so let's, we'll start at 1:00, if that works for the Administrator?
Yes, we can make that work, and I will reach out to the person that's only available by phone and set that up, and we'll post a notice indicating that we will have one interview by phone.
Okay. And I was talking briefly with the Administrator earlier today on ideas on how we handle, handle the questioning of it. I, I don't want to give a unfair advantage to historic city councilors, people that have been on this board in the past, and know all the lingo and the jargon and everything that we do up here. So, one of the things that I would like to do is, when we reach out to the people on Friday and give them a time to come in, give them a background of our March 11th, 2019 priority meeting, when we sat down and we discussed the priorities that this Council had moving forward, which was commercial and residential blight, Recreation Commission, or Recreation in general in our community, drug enforcement, follow-up on our studies, and our street repair, so they know that those will be one of the, those are the goals that this Council has, and we can ask them questions on how they fit into those goals moving forward, and I'd like them to be able to spend at least the weekend thinking about where their role is in this City Council to work on those priorities. So, that's where the City Administrator and I will be working this week, is to put those questions together as simplistic as we can, just to get more information from the applicants, but I think it's fair for them to understand where we're coming from as a City Council. Is everyone okay with that approach? Anything you guys would like to add to the, anything you'd like to add to the questioning of the City Councilors, and I think it should be public record on what, what we are asking them, because they're, everything they do from here on out would be public record, so yes.
Does the protocol indicate that we must ask the same question to each candidate?
I think that that would be the most fair way of doing it, I think that, absolutely.
Great.
And Mayor, I would add that if, if, depending on what the responses are, if you want to ask additional probing questions or something like that, that's appropriate too, depending on what direction that candidate goes in, so that's not a problem, but having a standard set of questions is best.
Anything else?
Mayor?
Yes.
Just a question, is the Council comfortable if we put the order of interviews in alphabetical order by last name, or do you have some other approach you'd like to do? Should we do it in the order the applications were received?
Might depend upon availability.
Per me?
It might depend upon availability of the candidates.
Yeah, I would say, let's just go by alphabetical order, but if, for whatever reason, someone has a time, time hiccup that they can't make it in, we'll, we'll rearrange for them. This has been a fast process to begin with, and some people may have work restraints or something, so...
We'll be setting that up then, after the 10th, the 11th?
Yeah, we'll be here, on Friday, we'll be setting all that up. Anything else that you have?
One other item, Mayor, I received an email today from the individual that had some concerns with their ambulance bill, and they want to get that resolved before the 120 days is over, and they, and they don't think that it's an appropriate expenditure, so is that something that we can talk about at the Committee of the Whole meeting on Thursday, to see how the Council wants to proceed? The Council had already passed a motion saying it was a valid bill, but they wanted to allow up to 120 days, and I think the person's refuting, he wants to make the bill go away.
I would, I would be okay with bringing it up, but we, it's a weird situation, we're in a committee of the whole, this involves medical stuff, HIPAA, I don't feel comfortable doing it in a, I don't feel comfortable doing it in a committee of the whole, I think it would make more sense to have a special City Council meeting to resolve that. But again, we've already handled that business.
Well, okay, I can work with you individually, because you could, you have the authority to set a meeting, or two or three councilors can also set a special meeting, so if that's what we need to do, I'll, I'll work with you individually about that.
I would feel more comfortable with a special meeting.
That's it, thank you.
Okay. City Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, Council, last week, we did have a criminal jury trial arising out of an incident that occurred on the 4th of July, 2018, an individual charged with fourth-degree and third-degree DUI, and it was a two-day trial. Chief Maston, one of his sergeant, and one of his officers were witnesses, did a great job, and the jury found the defendant guilty on both counts, and we get hundreds of cases every year, and very few of them actually end up going to a jury trial, but this one did, and there were some expert witnesses involved, so we had an expert on behalf of the city come up from the BCA and testify, and it was quite, quite an interesting case, but we were successful, and hopefully, the public will become more aware of not drinking and driving, and so, that's all I have.
I have, I have one question for you on the annexation, as I understand it, got kicked back from the state, because we had mapping, where do we need to go from here to get that annexation by resolution finalized?
Ken's been dealing with the state on that, and I, I'm not aware of the specifics of the most recent objection, but I know that there has been an issue because of the way some documents at the County Recorder's Office were identified, and they actually had a specific parcel number for an easement, which really just should have been part of a different parcel. Mr. Anderson and I have had some discussions in the past about that, but we, we haven't talked about it recently.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
Just to add to what the City Attorney had said, the, the application was submitted to the Municipal Boundaries Unit at the state, they returned it because of concerns with the legal descriptions, and that the information wasn't complete. So, essentially, one of the items that they said is, when the legal description includes a reference to a plat, the state requires an actual copy of the plat to be submitted with the application, which wasn't done, it was referencing a legal description, so that needs to be done. And then, there was also, as the City Attorney indicated, there was some mapping concerns that the state will need to look at and refer to, to make sure that there's continuity, or that the property being annexed is contiguous to the city. So, the City Attorney and I need to sit down and resolve those two issues, and resubmit the application to the state, and it's, hasn't happened recently, so we need to reinvigorate that process so it can get complete.
Okay. Any Department Heads here? Anyone want to talk? All right. All right, moving on to the Police Monthly Report.
Mr. Mayor, Council, hopefully, report for the Police Department for September, you'll see we had no specialized trainings for presentations that month. Statistically, we had 480 general calls for service, conducted 115 stops, issued 118 citations, assisted the ambulances 32 times, took 15 into custody, and generated 170 new case reports for the month. All of that is detailed in the attachments from the, from the Records Management System. Happy to answer any questions you have about that.
Any questions? Hearing none, we'll move on to the Fire Rescue EMS Monthly Report.
It's the last time for you, by the way. You're gonna have to come again.
Been a busy night.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and counselors. For the monthly report for activities in September, we had, uh, seven fire department call-outs that were full responses. Four of them were in the city, included a house fire, commercial fire, commercial fire alarm and a gas leak, natural gas leak. Three rural responses, which one was an ambulance assist, uh, manpower needed, and then two CO alarms. We also had two hazmat responses. Uh, one was a fuel spill and one was a leaking train car near Rainier. Our monthly meeting was on the 19th of September with a regular business meeting and then our training for that night was, uh, on SCBA's and air management. For the ambulance month of September, we had 89 911 calls, 52 transfers for a total of 141 runs compared to September of 18, which was 105 total runs, 61 911 calls, 44 transfers. For the year, that brings our totals up to 699 111 calls, 360 transfers for a total of 1,050 runs. Monthly meeting was on the 10th, uh, with a regular business meeting and then, uh, extrication PowerPoint and scene safety, uh, which we're going to cover this month as well. So, uh, that night was the overview for our practical training this month.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for, uh, Chief Manasa? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We're down to the nitty-gritty. We're at the Mayor, Council Committees, Boards, and Commissions. Anybody, anybody, anybody? All right. I, uh, I want to go through my mayor's report. Mayor Anderson started this, uh, probably about two years ago, just doing a quick mayor's report. I was able to, uh, meet with Representative Beckland. Uh, we discussed, uh, bonding for the airport, concerns over how we're going to fund the MPCA implications, uh, with, uh, um, with what we're going through with the North Cooch Sanitary District and ambulance deficit. Representative Beckland did, uh, inform me that the Coalition of Greater, Greater Minnesota Cities is a great resource for lobby work on unfunded mandates, especially with I and I issues with, uh, with the North Cooch Sanitary District, not specifically them, but for rural Minnesota. Uh, the council was a member of that in the past. There was a decision to get off of that. In the future, I, I would like to have, uh, the representative from the Coalition come and maybe speak to us on what, what they can offer us through, um, their lobby work in case that's something we want to look at moving forward. I sat in on the social services providers meeting on October 3rd. Greatest meeting I have sat in, in forever. And the reason for it, it was all of our social services in the community and they all gave a three-minute update of what they're doing and how they're helping and working with other people. The collaboration in that room was fantastic and I, I would like to see something like that moving forward with our boards and committees and I'll, I'll touch on that in just a second. I got to walk with, uh, the kids to National Walk to School Day. Great job, everybody involved. Um, I got to walk with fifth graders and they are the greatest kids in the whole wide world. Um, and they, they really liked, loved my dog and they thought that we got to walk in the street because they were with the mayor and I said that that's not real. Um, and, uh, the sadder part, although it is a, a highlight of my last week, was I got to go through, uh, the office and there were some really neat things that I found in Mayor Anderson's office. Um, I found Grandma's buttermilk pancakes recipe. I found a I Love Train sticker, lots and lots of forks. Um, I don't know why there were so many forks in there, but there were a lot of forks in his office. And I found a 1960s picture of Mayor Anderson laid out in a curling pose, because he was curling, in front of two bagpipers with the I Love International Falls button on a 1960s style, um, sweater. And it just embodied exactly what I would think of of Mayor Anderson in the 1960s. As I went through paperwork, I got about four pounds of assorted paper clips and literally a mountain of paperwork with, uh, Mayor Anderson's thoughts on everything from the Lazard-Sams Committee, from economic development here in town, our, our police service, our fire, our community, just thoughts that he had jotted down on the paper. And it is amazing how much that man loved our community. And, um, I've been told by a million people that I have huge shoes to fill and I can't. I'm not going to fill those shoes. What I'm going to do is this job differently. I'm going to do it to the best of my ability and, um, my, my goal is to honor the, the position of Mayor in International Falls, but I will never be what Bob Anderson was. Um, I'll be, I'll be me. I'll be Harley Drogas Mayor and I think that we'll be okay. Um, I did lay out what I'd like to see accomplished, uh, for the city in the first 100 days that I'm in this position, which gets us a little bit past, uh, the first of the year. And I think these are all achievable goals. In fact, some of these are things we already have lined up. We need to appoint a new counselor at large. We need to reach out to the community for open appointments, which is some of the stuff that we've already, uh, addressed this evening. As I said, I can't sit on all the boards. We need smart, educated, passionate individuals to serve on our boards. Uh, I'm going to reach out to our current board members, uh, the media publications and airings, which we, uh, we approved this evening. I will draft, I have drafted a letter for the Borderline Young Professionals, try to get some younger people to serve on our boards, the Chamber of Commerce and just talking to people in the community. It's not my goal to handpick people to sit on these boards. We need, we need people with passion that want to sit on our boards and take their community back. So if, uh, anybody who hears this wants to be part of International Falls moving forward, I would love your name and, uh, information to be appointed for boards and commissions. Since I won't be serving on every board, um, I'd like to start a monthly luncheon to share information, uh, from our boards and commissions, very similar to what, uh, that social services one. It was the most impressive thing I've seen in a very long time. Everyone was passionate about helping people and they shared what they did and there were no egos in that room. Everyone was there for the betterment of, uh, our community. And I'd like to see that, uh, moving forward with a monthly luncheon, because I'll be honest, meetings kind of suck. We need to, uh, find a new retailer for, uh, the vacant Kmart building. Uh, I've already reached out to KITA and, uh, we've reached out to the building owner and some potential retailers. There's a meeting in the works, uh, moving forward to try to fill that vacancy of that building, because it's so important to our community. Um, I encourage our council members and myself to join the Chamber of Commerce, meet with businesses. Uh, that goes back to one of the things that we talked about earlier this year is to pull some of those, uh, those, uh, studies off the shelf. And that came out of the Newmark Grub Night Frank Economic Adjustment Strategy. We need to finalize the comprehensive plan. That one seems to be pretty easy because it's right down the road, like we can see that one. We need to lay out our, uh, our sales tax and public works projects for 2021, or 2020 and 2021. That's, uh, kind of what that meeting is going to be this Thursday. Um, that's the 53 reconstruction project. It also is, uh, WSN is going to be laying out additional projects that we can do with those sales tax, uh, monies that are coming in. And we need to create a media plan so that we can explain to people why some roads are being chosen and other ones are not. There's a chance, there's a, until we actually see what WSN comes up with, uh, next week or this week, we don't know exactly what we're going to be doing moving forward, but I do know some of the worst talent, roads in our community are not going to be the ones that get fixed. But the reason for that is a long-term goal. We need to fix the roads before they break down completely. So some of our roads that are, uh, are in bad shape or decent shape may get a facelift so that they aren't completely broken down, so they look like some of our worst roads. Then it's our goal to come up with how we're going to set money aside, so in our, uh, in our next couple of budgets, along with whatever leftover monies we have from after bonding, to fix some of those bigger ones that need to be worked on. Some of the bigger ones may be in that first set of projects, but until we see what WSN comes up with, we don't know that, but we do need to come up with a strategy to explain to people that this is a long-term effort of International Falls. We're going to make this a better place in the long run. And, uh, the last piece is to annex the properties that have already been consented or city-owned property. And I do understand that we have an issue that we have to address, but it's been seven years for annexation and it's really a 90-day process. Um, we, at least these ones that are, um, are already consented to, and I won't do this every meeting. This was just laying out kind of a groundwork of where we're at. I'm not going to bore you guys with my thoughts every meeting.
Yeah. Sure.
Okay. Well, Brian Briggs actually sits through a lot of meetings with me, so he probably does know that I do this a lot. So anyways, that's all I have. I, uh, I, I would open up the floor to audience at this time if anyone has anything to bring to the council. Please.
Mayor, counselors, um, I have been asked by residents that are south of, um, Northland Distributing on Crescent, uh, that little abutment road across from Memorial Drive that goes into Crescent, off of 53 and then straight across, it's an accident waiting to happen. The stop sign was never replaced. And so when people are leaving their homes, especially at noon when Northland Distributing is going out for lunch, there's no stop there.
Hmm. Okay.
So they were, they had asked me to bring that to the council's attention. Uh, there used to be a stop sign there.
That'd be the one there by the Toppsall Ruffin?
Yes. Yep.
Okay.
Thanks.
Well, thank you.
It's an infrastructure.
Anybody else in audience want to come forward? Please.
Mayor and council, my name is Alyssa Clarity, Dr. Alyssa Clarity. Um, in talking to you in regards to proclaiming October National Chiropractic Health Month. Um, on behalf of myself and the other chiropractors in the area, doctors Michael Carney, Dean Cowman, Luke Nemec, and Gary Potter, we just want to thank you for your support and recognition. Um, as chiropractors, uh, we specialize in the care of the musculoskeletal system, which includes the muscles, bones, and joints of your body. Most commonly, we see patients with low back pain, neck pain, um, any other joint pain and headaches. Um, we do go through a thorough examination process to determine, uh, best practices and treat them accordingly. Um, and through this treatment plan, um, patients can expect to take steps towards better joint muscle health, uh, better posture, prevention of future injuries, and helping to reduce the need for prescription opioids or other riskier pain prevention and treatments. Um, our collective goal is to help the people of International Falls live healthy and active lives today and in the future, so we just thank you for your recognition and support.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anyone else in audience want to come before the council? All right. Hearing none. Uh, our next meeting will be this Thursday for, uh, Committee of the Whole Meeting. 5:00 PM. We are adjourned.